There we go. It's Monday, January 22nd, 2018, 6:00 PM. We're in the Winter High School Music Room. This meeting may be televised live on WCAT. Ms. Hames, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano.
Yeah.
Ms. Powell. Mr. Matucci.
Yeah.
Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Cipari.
Here. Ms. Norris and Ms. Bertino will please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have a few delegates and visitors here tonight, but first we'd like to hear from Senior Class President Nikala Norris and Junior Class President Ava Bertino. Just like to have an update, what's going on in senior and junior class.
Ava, you can come up to us. You can sit.
Okay.
That way they can hear you.
Okay, so the senior class, we've kind of finished all of our fundraising throughout our freshman, sophomore, and junior year, so we're not doing a lot of fundraisers this year. But we do run concession stands at basketball games and different things to try to still raise a little bit more money. We are also planning the talent show, which they didn't plan a talent show last year, so it was kind of in high demand this year. So it's going to be on March 15th, the talent show. We are working on last-minute details for auditions for that and different things. Senior week is basically already planned out. Prom is at Granite Links on May 29th. Still organizing what we want our theme to be, but everything else seems to be in order, senior night, everything. In other news, one of our classmates, senior Devon Pulsifer, hit 1,000 points for his basketball career, so that was really awesome for us to be a part of that with him. And also, a lot of seniors are a part of Dinner Theater, which the Drama Society runs, which is all this week at Prince Pizzeria on Route 1. So...
You guys are busy still.
Yeah.
Planning and planning for that senior year. So it's nice that most of the fundraisers are kind of winding down, but the activities are winding up as the fundraisers wind down. So it's good to keep us up to date on what's going on so that we can reach out either to Mr. Crombie, Mr. Serino, just to kind of find out what's going on. If we don't know the date of something, or if folks want tickets for something, you can certainly call the main office at the high school at (617) 846-5506 and ask about tickets. We can get you in touch with the right people, if you'd like to do that. So that's good. So senior class. Now junior class with Ava.
Hi. So on a larger scale, there are still kind of a lot of major events that come with junior year. One of which is what we start planning in January, which is the sophomore/junior social. So right now, we're basically just kind of adding the final major details because we have a venue. It's at Cottage Park Yacht Club on the 28th of April. However, we're still figuring out a theme and DJ and food and all of that, but that's kind of one of our major fundraisers for this year. And it's super important because we meet also with the sophomore class to do that too. Another thing is we're looking for prom venues right now. That's like one of the major things in our agenda. So we are, like the student government and I, are going to their prom just to see their venue.
No, I don't think they're allowed.
And that's kind of like our major thing right now is because better to book it earlier than late. Then kind of more smaller fundraisers. We're looking to do kind of like an items fundraiser, kind of like cookie dough or candles or something like that to end junior year. And even smaller than that, we also do concession stands and we are doing the concession stand tomorrow at the girls' basketball game.
All right. Very good. Anything else you guys can think of? No? So they're coming off of practice and getting ready to go home and do homework and get back to their studies. So thank you guys for coming out and updating us. I don't know if anyone on the committee has any questions for them. It's nice to have the presence of the students to give us sort of the down and dirty about what's going on at Winter Pie and keeping us up to date, you know, as far as the activities are concerned. Sometimes I don't remember to tell them all, so having them sit next to me allows me to, you know, just to kind of cue them in to some of the things that we wouldn't otherwise know if you guys didn't show up. So it's super important that we have you there and you're able to keep us up to date. All right?
Yep.
So get out of here and go do your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Next, we also have from the Winter Board of Health Committee, Billy Schmidt and Susan McGuire, who's going to speak to us about some tobacco regulations. Sorry.
Yes, it's a bow.
First of all, that's a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
A lot better presentations. We'll try to be a little bit more key than I was at the town council. First of all, I really appreciate being here this evening, school committee chairman Kathy Danical, and fellow members of the school committee. As for the record, my name's Bill Schmidt. I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health. Susan McGuire is another board member. We have currently another deputy seat. And I know the town council president's going to nominate someone good at some point and we're looking forward to having a third person on the board. The mission of the Board of Health, quite frankly, is to protect, promote, and regulate public health in the town of Winter. We assume a proactive approach. We're trying to do a lot of things. Sometimes in the past, it hadn't been as much done. We're really trying to do some more things. So what we're here tonight to talk about is some proposed changes to the regulations on the sale of tobacco products. And unlike other town boards, the Board of Health has the authority from the state government that we can make regulations independently. So even though we're not required to do so, we're having a public hearing tomorrow night, actually, at 6:00 PM in the Lyceum. Evening at school. It's been a legal ad. Today, I delivered to all of the retail owners in town copies of the regulations as well as inviting them to the public hearing. Also, if they can't come, they could submit testimony. We spoke before the town council last week. Before the PTO next week. So we're trying to do a lot of outreach to get people's opinion. And you, obviously, the school committee, have a real interest in what's happening with young people. And cigarette smoking is a serious problem with young people. So we wanted to come before you here tonight and talk about this. We're making the changes because we really believe that the changes they were proposing will really benefit the citizens of the town of Winter. And we're mindful of the authority that we do have and the responsibility we have to do so in an appropriate way. So the draft regulations that we're proposing, the strengthening we have now, there are basically nine changes, which I'll go through quickly and I'll go into some of them in more detail, and so will Susan. So the big one that's probably of a lot of interest is we're raising the minimum sales age from 18 to 21. 137 communities in the Commonwealth have already done so, so we're trying to do that. Number two, limiting flavored other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to adult-only retail tobacco stores. Number three, we're banning product sales in healthcare institutions, which includes pharmacies. Four, banning the sale of blunt wraps. Five, we're going to reduce the number of tobacco product sales permits from 20 to 18 in the town. Number six, requiring single cigars to be sold at least $2.50 and multi-packs of two or more for at least $5. Number seven of interest, preventing tobacco sales permits to be issued to new retailers within 500 feet of a school. Eight, extend the enforcement tolling period from 24 months to 36 months. And number nine, permitting a non-renewable tobacco sales permit to a retailer with three illegal sales to a minor within a year. So I'm going to talk about a few of these, and then Susan will talk about a few of the other ones. And of course, then we'd welcome to hear any questions or comments that you do have. Raising the minimum sale age to 21 will reduce tobacco use and nicotine addiction among youth, which will improve health, save lives over time, and reduce healthcare costs. Tobacco use and nicotine addiction is the leading cause of preventable illness and premature death in our Commonwealth. And cost over our state billions of dollars for healthcare each year. Let me repeat that. It's the leading cause of preventable illness. Our youth are very susceptible to nicotine addiction because it affects the development of the brain. More than 80% of cigarette smokers begin using before age 18. Many cities and towns, as I mentioned, 100 and some, including our neighboring communities, have enacted policies to reduce tobacco use and nicotine addiction that go beyond current state and federal laws and regulations. Raising the minimum legal age for all tobacco products to age 21 is an effective strategy for reducing youth tobacco use since it removes legal access to tobacco products from our high school social networks. So as you know, a lot of students turn 18 in high school. And what happens oftentimes at the 18-year-olds, they're buying cigarettes, they're passing it off to the 17s and the 16s and the 15s. So this idea was designed really to attack that. The Institute of Medicine projects that raising the legal age to 21 across the state would reduce overall tobacco use by 12% for 150,000 Massachusetts tobacco users. The Federal Center for Disease Control reports that 75% of adults support raising the age to 21, including 70% of current smokers. One other issue which I'll talk about briefly is also why we're going to allow the, actually, the possibility of removing tobacco sales permit from a retailer with three illegal sales to a minor. Now fortunately, in the times which our tobacco agent has gone through and done stings, basically, we've actually had a pretty good record here in Winter. There's only a couple stores that have had multiple times. But what we're trying to do now is kind of up the ante a little bit because if someone is selling three times, if they're caught, actually, caught, making three illegal sales, it will be because not only have they done it once, but in successive sting operations going back, they're repeatedly doing it. So it's a question of, they'd really have to be going out of their way to try to violate the regulation. So that's one of the things we're adding as well. Again, a number of the other communities have these policies. I'm going to pass this now on to Susan. We'll speak about a couple of others.
Thank you, Bill. The council president, superintendent, chairman, president, chairman.
Yeah, I'm Ava Bertino.
So thank you for having us. So some of this you've heard last week, and you can hear it again. A couple of us and someone in the audience. Two things, or three, that I will speak to. The first one is the board will propose that the sale of flavored tobacco products be limited to adult-only retail tobacco stores. 101 communities in Massachusetts have adopted this policy. Neighboring communities include Boston, Chelsea, Everett, and Saugus. A little bit of information about e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes are battery-operated devices, including vape pens, vapes, et cetera. They are designed to deliver nicotine, flavorings, and other chemicals in the form of an aerosol that users inhale. According to the 2016 Surgeon General's report, e-cigarette use among youth and young adults is now a major public health concern. Use has increased 900% among high school students from 2011 to 2015. The report concluded that the use of any nicotine product among youth is unsafe. E-cigarette aerosol can contain harmful constituents, including nicotine, which is highly addictive, chemicals such as diacetyl. It's a flavored agent that can cause serious lung disease when inhaled. And I believe popcorn lung, you might have heard of that, is included there. And ultrafine particles can be inhaled into the lungs. As Bill mentioned, nicotine affects brain development and can result in learning and cognitive defects, deficits, sorry, susceptibility to addiction and mood disorders. Nicotine is as addictive as cocaine or heroin. And that's from the U.S. Health and Human Services report. More than 80% of all adult smokers begin smoking before the age of 18. And I think Bill mentioned that. 90% before entering their teens. The primary reason 12- to 17-year-olds report using e-cigarettes was because they come in flavors they like. 81% reported that. Currently flavored products are considered starter products, can lead to long-term addiction. And on the market, there are greater than 7,000 flavored products that come in sweet flavors, fruit, candy, and dessert. Names such as cotton candy, root beer, bubble cone. So you can see, all of these flavors are targeted to our youth and being marketed to our youth. Which brings us to vaping. So vaping apparently appears to be the number-one way that youth are using e-cigarettes. And the vaping program in Winter was brought to our attention by our town manager-in-chief, Del Henty. It's occurring in our school settings, and you may all be familiar with this. We, Principal Crombie called a high school meeting, I think early December, was it? And invited parents and students to come. And a discussion was started. I thank a lot of parents. I know myself, Bill. We've been pretty educated around vaping and really wasn't aware of the magnitude of this problem. Winter High School now has suspension policies in place, some serious ones, depending on how many times the child is found vaping. It will result in suspension. And there also is a diversion policy that is available to students if they wish to work with CASA. Principals are now faced with conducting random bathroom checks to monitor youth a couple of times a day. And that's usually where the students will vape, sometimes in a group setting. And also vaping is occurring in the classrooms. You may have all heard of the Juul vaping device. Is that familiar to everyone? It's a fairly new vaping device on the market. It's probably the most commonly used vape device currently by youth. One Juul pod nicotine is equal to one pack of cigarettes or 200 puffs. So I have actually purchased one because I'm a visual person, but I think you need to see it because this is mainly the device that students are using in school. And it can be concealed very easily. The battery hooks into their computer. Students at times will charge the device right on their laptop. So if you're familiar to see this, I'll pass this around. But this is the device. This is the charger, and that goes into the side of the computer. And this sits on top. This, and it charges. And I guess the charge holds for 24 hours. You insert a pod. It's called a pod at the top. And the pod contains enough nicotine. It's equal to a pack of cigarettes. And it contains 200 puffs. Apparently, they're developing one that will be twice that amount of nicotine. So the student can, so when you put the pod in, that's, I guess, what they put in their mouth. They do not buy the pod. And they inhale. And when they exhale, it's an aerosol mist. So they can blow it into, apparently, their sweatshirt. When the teacher turns their back, apparently, they're vaping. And it's a fine aerosol mist. But what could they inhaling in their lungs? And as I said, there are chemicals going into their lungs and some serious harmful effects. This Juul product comes in four flavors: mint, mango, fruit flavors, and there's one other one: tobacco. So you'll hear about this product in the NFTI, the Boston Globe. A lot of communities are concerned about this and doing similar efforts as we have, suspensions in schools, sending warnings home to parents. So Maynard Police Station, Chief Detective Sweeney has invited the Juul representatives to come to the Maynard High School the first week in February. And a number, a great number of communities, surrounding communities have been invited and will be attending. And Chief Del Henty is sending someone down. Detective Don is coming in a couple of hours' time.
Thank you.
And so next steps, oh, and lastly, the preventive needs assessment done by CASA in 2016 revealed that greater than 60% of our students reported vaping. Next step's CASA. It will be spearheading a community-wide seminar for vaping. So that's a positive step. We will be meeting with the PTO from the high school next week. And a webinar is coming out tomorrow on a new report that will be released on the consequences of e-cigarettes. Now the last one, I guess I'll report, that will be most important to you. As Bill mentioned, we will be restricting tobacco sales permits to new retailers within 500 feet of a school.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Absolutely, no.
So will the current retailers be grandfathered in? Is that what that is?
Yes, only new.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the committee?
I have a question. Are there any studies or statistics from the communities that have banned the sales to younger, raised the limit to 21? Is there any statistics on whether or not that's had an impact on use?
I know Needham has done some work. Because Needham was like one of the first towns that did it. I know they've, on one hand, there hasn't been a tremendous reduction in the sales actually in communities. But since it's kind of an early thing, I'm not sure they're doing any studies of whether or not, you know, there's been a significant decrease in students. I'll find out. We'll look into that later.
Mr. Perry.
Two questions. One, how are our regulations compared to where they are East Boston and Chelsea, the closest communities that we have? Are they very similar in that sense?
In fact, they were ahead on this issue than us. So I have a map here. And Mike, let's see. But yes, Boston.
Are all three communities 21?
Yeah. So you can see here, here's a map, which is basically all the communities in green are the ones across the state that have gone to 21. So we went to like Little Boy Island. So you have Chelsea, Bier, Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, Everett, et cetera.
And the other question is, are you going to go to the middle school PTO as well?
Yeah, not until the 2nd of May in February, I believe, but yes, we will.
So Chairman.
Mattucci.
I just appreciate the Board of Health's work on this. And also, I'm totally in favor of the proposed changes into our new regulations. What's the next step for you guys to move this forward?
So we have a public hearing tomorrow evening. We'll see what kind of testimony. There are, when we do draft regulations, these are what we spend a lot of time on, what we think are the best practices, but we all want to hear from other people because there may be some impacts that we haven't thought about or ways to modify certain things. So that's the purpose of the hearing, to hear people on both sides of the issue, on all sides of the issue. And then we're not going to be taking a vote right away. We've also asked people they could submit testimony by the end of the month if they can't make it there in person. Depending on what kind of testimony we get, and that might have an impact. It might be a situation, say, with a particular store, maybe if they sent, say, they sent in some testimony and they wanted some clarification or something, go out and speak to them or whatever. Try, you know, try to get everybody on the same page. We don't know when there's going to be a new appointment, but that would be something. But so, we wouldn't be voting on this until our February meeting, which is the last Tuesday in February at the earliest? Again, depending what kind of feedback we get.
I think one important point on that, once we vote, the effective date would be out a couple of months because the retailers would need education and our tobacco agent would be conducting that at each store.
Right. And also, if there's some restrict change in product, that would give them a time to deal with their wholesalers, et cetera. So that...
I guess one thing I feel to mention is the other reason around the flavored products is if youth go into convenience stores, there are some of these products. It's exposure. And when they see it, and the way they're sold, they're attracted to it. And another reason.
Mr. Perrin.
Can I make a motion that we support the proposed draft legislation for this?
Second. Just a minute, two seconds. Any further discussion?
I do have one question on that, though. We did not go through each, we did not go through each policy.
Yeah.
So...
That's true. We didn't go through all of them.
I think if there's...
No, but I mean, there was some, I did mention them all, but...
Right.
That's not to tell you we don't want your support.
Right, right. But I just wanted to...
I withdraw. But I don't want, you know, if there's any misleading. So let me repeat the changes briefly, and then if there's anything...
Can I, Mr. Chairman? Why don't you leave a copy of that with us?
Okay.
And then we could maybe draw something up for them.
We could perhaps send it to our policy something.
That'd be great.
A copy of my presentation? Do you have one?
Yes, I have some notes on it.
Well, you can have my copy.
Okay, great.
You can have my copy.
All right.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you so much for showing up tonight. We appreciate all the hard work that you put in.
We tried, we're trying to do the right thing.
Right.
Senator... I'm through the chair. As the superintendent of schools, this is something that's been certainly right before me as I came in the door. And having some children of my own, I'm aware of the sales in the community. I'm aware of the vaping and what the Juuls look like. However, I wasn't because they look like USB drives. So many of our parents are not aware of what is in the backpack. And Mr. Crombie, as well as the rest of the principals and the school committee, are really, really invested in educating our parents. So our first meeting that we had on e-cigarettes and Juul was attended better than I thought. We're going to collaborate with CASA to do a second meeting. Having you come to our parent PTO and PTA meetings certainly will be helpful. And there's not enough information out there, you know, for our parents. So to continue to flood them with this information, I think it puts our parents in a better position to know what their children are doing. Some of us who are in the business, who saw the Juul and what it looked like, or the e-cigarette and what it looked like, and really couldn't distinguish what it was, was eye-opening because it does look like a USB drive. And the information we received back from our students was that it was just vapor. So the e-cigarette seminar that we had that talked about the lack of regulations and FDA regulations around what's inside, the materials that are inside, and what they have to put on the label, which is almost nothing because there is no FDA approval, doesn't allow you to know what you're ingesting and what is going in to your systems. Our teachers are aware and are keeping an eye out for students who are utilizing. I think that the students are now aware that the teachers are watching for it and looking for it. And I do think that that is enabling us to decrease at this level within the school. There is certainly a strong message that there is no tolerance. Suspension certainly is a punishment, but it's not typically the way we would like to go. We'd like to educate the students to not have to receive any type of out-of-school time. The diversion program is helpful in that. But the more we can educate, the less likely our students are, the less they know, the more appealing it is to them. Especially with the colors and the, they come up with a new flavor every day. And the marketing, as you said, in some of our stores, where students are going in before school to buy gum, to buy candy, to buy soda, to buy something to bring to school. And those items in color and different flavors are right in front of them at the cash register. So we truly appreciate your bringing this, not only to the school committee, but to our PTOs and PTAs and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perrin.
I'll take the table of motion, and we'll take it up at our next scheduled meeting.
Second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it.
Please, thank you.
Thank you so much. Correspondence, we did receive an email from Don Sullivan dated January 9th, 2018. And that email was in favor of Shawna Hodge Barnett for the vacant school committee seat. Do we have any public comment this evening? Any comment?
I'm just, you know, here to show my face if I had everybody and just kind of connect with everyone. So thank you guys for having me.
You want to introduce yourself?
I'm crazy. So I have applied for the open seat on the school committee. So I've met with many of you already, but a few faces I haven't connected with yet.
Thank you for being here. Also want to acknowledge Councilor Lodge Michael Lacerdo, who attended tonight. Next, we have the minutes of January 8th, 2018. They have a motion to approve the minutes.
So we'll...
Motion by President Vecchia. We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on for the warrants, we have a warrant, SVW 18-12, the amount of $248,688.97. They have a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President... Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Vecchia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We also have two payroll warrants, SPW eighteen dash fourteenth, and the amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and twelve cents, and SPW eighteen dash fifteen, the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-ninety-one and eighty-four cents. They have a motion to approve the payroll warrants.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Buildings and grounds, we do have one request from the Winter Gymnastics Academy for the gymnastics competition, which will be in the high school auditorium on February tenth. We do have all the proper payment and paperwork. They have a motion to approve the application.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any further discussion?
Clarification?
Yep.
Is it in the gym or the auditorium?
It's a gymnasium, my mistake. All right.
He's renting both, actually.
Renting both.
Yes, yeah, he's going to do awards in the auditorium immediately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Yep, we also have the Winarc. I thought that was approved. Winarc has rented out the gym on Sundays, January seventh through February twenty-fifth. They have all the proper paperwork in here for the gymnasium, for the Special Olympics, and we'd like a waiver for, also a waiver for the custodial fee, is that correct, Mr. Perry?
No, not a waiver for the custodial, it's just a waiver for the U-rev, so they pay the custodial fee.
Yep, that's, all right.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No, opposed, and one abstention. The ayes have it. Ms. Powell, you update us on the facilities?
Sure, unless you want to move that down to the superintendent's report.
We can move that down.
You do that, and I'll include that in that report.
Subcommittee report. We did have a subcommittee meeting, the Superintendent Contract Negotiation Committee met on, on January sixteenth. It was myself, Mr. Matucci, and Ms. Powell. Because of negotiations, we did have most of that meeting executive session, and I do anticipate later in this, this meeting, we will enter executive session to brief the committee on what was discussed. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so, I provided in your packet a copy of the parks update, so what we would, an update regarding the school playground. One of the things we talked about in our review of the report of the inspection that had been done over a year ago was to put into place anything that we could immediately. One of those things that was recommended was going through the playgrounds and doing a weekly inspection to make sure that any loose pieces, any changes in the, in the park itself, any broken equipment was notated, and that we were able to have a plan of action for anything new that had happened. So, I included in your packet just a copy of what, a sample copy of what each checklist would look like. So, the head custodian at the Gorman Fort Banks and at the Arthur T. Cummings weekly will go out onto the park and take a peek at it. Just gives you that sort of week-to-week ongoing assessment of the park, and as these are completed, they're handed in to the principal, as well as the facilities manager, in the event that we need to either order some materials or make some corrections. And staying on the park, we have Nancy White, who did the original park inspection, had come out and met with us, met with the building principal, as well as Chief Delahanty, to go through that report one more time and get a status update of where we were at and where we may need to go in terms of the surface of the park. The, the Gorman Fort Banks was in great condition with a crack in one of the slides, and that was being, had been ordered, it was under warranty and is being repaired, and the Arthur T. Cummings requires a little bit more TLC and some larger potential restoration. So, Nancy is planning to come out the first week in February to meet with Chief Delahanty, the principal, and the facilities director, to talk about some of the plans after walking through the park again and seeing some of the updates that were done since her first report, which were, were minimal in terms of the slide still had a crack in it, there was still some points on the climber outside that needed to be fixed, the swings, portions of the swings, the handles that you hold on to, it had plastic put on them, they were recommending some different type of material, also the surface itself needing a full repair or replacement. So, she's coming out to go through some of the potential costs associated with that, and at that same time, we'll be needing to talk about how we are going to fund the repairs. And it can range anywhere from, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for a surface, keeping the, the equipment we have, to far beyond that in, in terms of replacing the entire park. So, I've had conversations with Shawn Driscoll, again, Chief Delahanty, looking at safety grants, looking at other sources of income through the school, as well as the town having a potential contribution to that. That's in the beginning stages with the funding, however, we do need to have upfront some sort of an estimate of what it is that we're going to do. So, those specs are being drawn up for estimates at doing things such as repairing, like I said, the whole surface and all the playground equipment, or fashions of that, but definitely the surface. So, we're hoping in early February to have a better picture on the total cost, so that we can further our discussions with the town and the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the school department, to see what our next steps in that process will be. So, more to come on that in, in early February. Jumping over to budget discussions, where I'm at with the budget discussions, we've had lots of meetings with the principals, talking about next year's budget, looking at staffing, class size, student enrollment, programs that we have, contracts that we have that are either ending or are coming close to a close, materials and supplies, curriculum, those will continue, those conversations will continue. We've also, the facilities department and the athletic department have had lots of conversation around the needs and needs assessment for FY nineteen, and our next step is to schedule a finance committee meeting with the school committee to update them on the thoughts of the principals, as well as the various school administrators, and then continue that, that budget process for the next few months. And little update on Miller Field. So, Miller Field, we have a draft facilities manual that the, the athletic director, as well as the high school principal, Matt Crombie, put together, that includes the field maintenance, a field maintenance schedule, as well as a rental schedule and a proposed rental fee schedule. So, that is being completed hopefully this week, so that we'll have it ready, a draft ready for the school committee to take a look at and to ask us some questions, so that we can have that completely done if and when we have the field turned back over to the school district will be ready to go. We are planning our schedules for the fall, for fall sports, as if the students would be allowed to play on that field for track and lacrosse, in hopes that there is some finalizing of the project, and we're able to have that come back to the school. If not, we definitely understand that we may have to go out, as we did for the past couple of years, and play on other fields, but we just wanted to get those dates down in the calendar. In terms of, I think that might be, a second, football banquet, I had the opportunity and was invited to attend the football banquet. It was a great, great banquet, where it was interesting to watch the different students who were recognized, and all the awards that have been going on for quite some time, and each student that was able to receive a war, an award, but most importantly, looking at the students as a whole, and how, how much, regardless of who is getting up, for what level of award, that football team responds as a family, a whole group of really, really great kids, who were very patient with the process on, at, at Miller Field, and just a classy, classy group of students, both on and off the field. So, it was, it was nice to be able to see them in a little bit more relaxed atmosphere with their coach and, and with the number of families that attended. So, it was very nice. Mr. Driscoll did a great job, you know, during the process, recognizing not only the, the student athletes, but also parents, and a number of people from the community who have an investment in the football program. And the venue, the venue was at the Elks, at the Winter Lodge of Elks, it was very well, very well attended. Quick technology update, we had some difficulty with our Wi-Fi at the Gorman Fort Banks and the Arthur T. Cummings School, and it was a little bit more than some difficulty. We were down for a couple of weeks, which, if you ever took a cellphone away from a middle school or a high school aged student that cut their Wi-Fi off, you, you could really see what happens. It's sort of paralyzing in a public school that uses Wi-Fi twenty-four-seven for our Chromebooks and for our testing, and to have our students access their curriculum, to shut the Wi-Fi off in the building was somewhat paralyzing. So, I'm happy to say that there was a small miracle that took place, and that Wi-Fi is back up and running. We have a networking project that the town council had approved, some substantial money towards this networking project that is going to improve the infrastructure of our capabilities from, across many venues, the town hall, as well as the, the Arthur T. Cummings and the Gorman Fort Banks. And once that is completed, we believe that the infrastructure will be able to handle the level of technology that we're using every day. So, I believe the difficulties, many of the difficulties we're having surround the fact that we are using much more technology than was ever designed to be handled in a building such as the Arthur T. Cummings, which is the hub. So, if you picture all the classrooms trying to access the Wi-Fi at the same time, you know, in your own home, a couple of the kids are on the Wi-Fi, and, you know, somebody's watching Netflix, that things tend to slow down. For us, they shut down. And again, it was, it was paralyzing, it taught some of us a little bit about patience, it retrained some of us to plug a computer into the wall, because we had internet, but we did not have Wi-Fi, which was a huge concept that many of our students are, are not in tune with, because most kids don't plug into anything, unless their battery's dying and their iPhone. They're just used to walking into a room and being connected, and, and most of them can jump off the Wi-Fi of the house next door, if, in fact, the Wi-Fi in the house is shut off by a parent, either accidentally or on purpose. However, in a school, that's not necessarily the case, because of our controls over what type of Wi-Fi our, our students are allowed to attach to. So, I'm happy to report that I don't have to answer another question about Wi-Fi, and haven't had to in twenty-four hours, and hopefully, once the fiber project is, sorry, the network project is complete, we will be up and running much faster with less breakdown. The anticipated timeframe for that, we have to have some electricians come in and, and put some wiring in, and then the project itself should take about five days, and our plan is to have that done during February vacation. So, it'll be not only less interruption on the Wi-Fi, but certainly, there will be no students in the building, and therefore, you know, for safety purposes and whatnot, we prefer it to be done that way. MASC is willing to come out and do some training for the school committee, and so I have some information about reaching out to the folks that come out and do initial training for folks who have never participated as, in a school committee role, and a member of the school committee, and I'll provide the chair with the name and contact for that person, so that if you so choose, you're able to access.
It's a great program.
Yeah, and they come out and do like the, the rules and regulations of being a school committee member, what is your role, what to do in certain situations, and I think they review Robert's rules and, and the like, so they are more than willing to do that. And then, the last thing on my report is just a, a recommendation, moving forward for February, that we add an additional meeting in February, as of right now, our only February meeting is at the end of February, which doesn't really give us much time from now, until, until then, in terms of warrants and any other school business. So, I would recommend that we pick a Monday in February, perhaps the first or second Monday, when we get down to, to new business, to add a committee meeting.
Yep.
And I think I may have hit everything on my list.
Can I ask a question? On, on the Miller Field, you mentioned the fall sports, and working on that schedule, what about the spring sports?
I misspoke. Spring sports is what I was referring to, I apologize.
Okay.
So, spring sports is the calendar that Mr. Serino and Mr. Crombie are now working on, and so trying to make sure we set up our home and away games, and we are doing that with, again, with the, with the hope that we'll have the field back in our possession or be able to have those games scheduled there irregardless, depending upon the completion of the field.
Okay, and it's going to be lacrosse and track?
That is lacrosse and track.
A couple of questions. Well, first, actually, I have two kids in the Cummings School, the teachers and Mr. Harity did a terrific job. They, the kids, they weren't upset about it, they dealt with it just fine, they might have liked, you know, having something different for a little while, doing some paperwork, so felt the teachers did a terrific job transitioning for those couple of weeks. And in my house, it didn't bother the kids, so that's good. Miller Field, do we know when the field house is going to start?
So, we do not. We know that they are in, last I heard from the committee, that they were still working within North Shore Vocational School, in terms of timelines, but I don't believe it will be before the spring, I think if anything, it will begin after the school, after school closes for the summer.
Sometime, okay.
But I'd have to get an update from Vinnie Crossman on that.
And the other question is, the maintenance person for that, are we paying them yet, or...
So, no, we have not, because we don't have the field yet in our possession, and we have only used it that one time, there hasn't had to be any true maintenance done of the field. I know that the project manager, who's still working on the field, there are still some structural things that need to be addressed with the turf, there's, in certain spots on the turf, there's too much fill, and they want to flatten that out. So, there are still lots of checklist items that they're working on. So, once all of that is completed, that is when we will begin to, to have somebody do some of the maintenance work, and again, that, that manual, that field maintenance manual speaks to what somebody would be doing at different levels, depending upon whether it's a game, or open and closing for community use, whatever it may be, that, that particular role, who would be doing what during that time is included in that manual.
Are we going to do it, or is the DPW going to be...
So, as of, when it comes back to the school, the school will be responsible for, for doing all of that, for maintaining that field.
Are we envisioning that to be full-time, I mean, the maintenance portion of it being full-time, or would it be shared between a building custodian?
So, shared responsibility, the way we have looked at it right now, and again, it's going to depend upon the level of use, so whether it's, if it's only school use, you know, certainly, that you don't, you won't need to be, if you're not open beyond the school day, then people who are already working during the school day, there'll be portions of that that they'll be able to cover. Before Miller Field was changed to the new Miller Field, the custodial staff had a role in that field, and we don't see that changing, so we still see that as being part of, part of their role, so it's, it's a pretty intricate tiered system of, of support on the field, and there are certain things that you have to be trained to do, which, maintaining the turf itself, there's very specific training, Viking, the, the committee, Miller Field Committee, has been training folks, athletic director, our field maintenance people, our maintenance staff anyway, around how to, how to utilize the machines. We have a mule that we, we use, we have all kinds of, kind of funky turf stuff that, and, dimensions that you have to put little sticks in to see how much turf is there, to see where you need to, to add fill, so that process is going on. The, the field committee has informed us that they will provide us with that support and training for, I believe it's a year, if not longer, and once the project is complete, they'll roll, you know, the specifics of that out to us, but we will still have to have specific staff members doing specific tasks, and again, that's, that's outlined in the manual, and the manual development is something that's been going on for about four months. I've been a part of it with Matt Serino, in looking at other school districts that have similar fields and have done similar projects, taking their field maintenance manuals and seeing how does that equate to what we have here, and what have they done with their staff to make it a process that's streamlined, but also extremely effective, and that there's an accountability for each piece of that process, each step in the way, so that we know when we do have a field house, who's going to be working in that field house to clean the bathrooms, to keep them stocked, who's going to be... who's going to be working on the field, who's going to be setting up and breaking down different projects on the field? Who will be there to make sure the mats are down so that folks don't go on the track who shouldn't be on the track? And so that students that are participating in lacrosse walk across the padded pathway and not on the track itself. So the maintaining of this project, which is, I believe, a nine-point-eight million-dollar field, is very, very important to us as a school district to make sure that there is a check and balance in place every time the gate is open and closed, and for every event that we have on that field, that we're following the guidelines, you know, especially around the turf itself. But also, we have brand-new bleachers, we're going to have a brand-new field house, so we want to make sure that we are covered in every direction. So we have not started paying anyone as of yet to do that, but I anticipate in the spring that there will be somewhat of a cost associated with that.
Did they mention how the field handled the high tide that we had a couple of weeks ago, that high tide and all that flooding? Did it seem like the drainage did the job that was supposed to do?
So I have not heard any feedback on that, which is a good sign.
Interesting change.
Yeah, zero?
Zero.
Yeah, so there was zero, so that's a, probably due to the raised height. I think we came up about four feet. Yeah.
It was supposed to be built for a hundred-day flood, and we got a hundred-day flood, so that's a good sign.
Part of the reason there was no problem is because of the project up on Shore Drive, believe it or not.
Right.
Folks have been complaining about it because it doesn't look as great as it should, but the bottom line is, because of the nature of the storm that we had, it was more of a tidal surge in the Bay Area versus an oceanfront storm, you know?
Okay.
So there was no penetration of water down any of the side streets that lead to Lewis Lake.
Right.
And the road up there along the road. No problem at all.
Right.
And believe it or not, the tide that we had was the highest tide recorded in Boston Harbor, it was even higher than the blizzard of seventy-eight. And to give you an example how much the project on Shore Drive helped, during the blizzard of seventy-eight, there was several feet of water under the field. And I don't know if you remember, but it was completely destroyed, they had to redo it. So the project worked.
Yeah.
Thank God.
Any personnel updates?
Personnel updates, yes. So we have a couple of postings. So as far as, I'm going to go right through, as far as the appointments, we, at this point, have none. We have no resignations to report this week or retirements, and we do have three postings. We have an office aide for a resignation that we spoke of at our last meeting, part-time office aide. We have crossing guard opening for the crossing guard at the Arthur T. Cummings. And we have a bus driver, substitute bus driver opening in the event that we had some absences with our bus drivers and we're having difficulty filling, so we asked to post it again to see if we could get some substitute bus drivers just to be on call for us if and when.
Did you get a response on that?
Nope, not yet. We're hoping to, we're going to post it again and hopefully we have some more responses this time of year. And that would be it. No leaves of absence at this time.
Under new business, it's 2018, so it's an election year. Secretary Galvin announced that the primary day this year will be Tuesday, September fourth, day after Labor Day. Everything shows it's going to be a high turnout this year. The town clerk has asked us to use both the high school and the Cummings School. The election this year, the primary because of Yom Kippur, it'll be the day after Labor Day, both for both the Democratic primary and the Republican primary. So do we have a motion to approve both those facilities?
How do I make a motion?
Oh, second.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded in by President Vecchia. Any discussion on the motion?
I guess, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has the administration, and I'll take a look at this to see if that's a...
So we have, and in the past, we have had election days where I believe school is open for teachers and professional development, but it is not open for students. So we're looking at the calendar moving forward, be an upcoming vote, and I believe we take that up in March?
Yes.
I believe. So I have the principals looking at half-days, professional development days, and how the calendar may look for the upcoming school year and what changes they may see as something that would be supportive of full school days and maximizing the use of our days. So that we'll be mindful of that, that students will not be in school on that day, and we'll have to move our professional development around that. And it's going to depend also on the start of school, how that looks, but that'll be a vote for the school committee to consider in the next few months.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I opposed, and I have to abstain. Subcommittee appointments. In my conversation with Glenn Kuchar, he said that it's okay for me to hold on some appointments to subcommittees until the whole committee is formed. So I decided to appoint three subcommittees who has direct business affected in a timely manner. That's the Budget Subcommittee, the Policy Subcommittee, and the Superintendent's Contract Negotiation Subcommittee. Moving on to unfinished business, we do have some policies. We have the chemical health violation policy. Oops, sorry, we brought up our new business. As Ms. Howard said earlier, she would like to have us add an additional meeting in February. I would like to make a motion that we meet on Monday, February twelfth, at six o'clock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to unfinished business. We do have a few policies. We have the chemical health violation policy, the substance abuse prevention educational policy, and the smoking on school premises policy. These policies all could be found in your packet, and I believe they're already read in front of a school committee meeting in the past. Mr. Parent?
Can I make a motion? We table this since we have an opportunity to read these through.
I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just include, under new business...
Naming schools.
The naming of the school facility policy was under there, not for the purpose of new business, but prior school committee meetings, one of the discussions that we had had was bringing to light different policies that may come up throughout the school year that either come to my attention from another committee or something that I have read and feel as though the committee may want to just read through, not necessarily make changes to, but read through and be aware of. As we know, that policy handbook is about this thick, and it's not something that you pick up and read on a Sunday morning, so if I find a policy that I find might be of interest, I ask to put it in the packet just for you to read so that you are familiar with it and if you have any questions on it. So it would be appropriate for that policy also to be reviewed during that same time. So if the committee would please also include that in that unfinished business, I'm sorry, in the, yes, unfinished business, and put it with the policies to review.
Mr. Parent has made a motion, and would you like to amend that motion?
To include the school facilities policy.
What does the motion do?
Table it to the next meeting so we can have an opportunity to review the policies here.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. President Vecchia, last time we met, we spoke about the school committee vacancy. I know that since that time, you met with the council, and I was wondering if you would brief us on what that decision was.
We opened it for, obviously, for applicants to apply, and we will meet jointly on February fifth, which is a Tuesday, six-thirty.
Since that time, I have spoken and met with all three candidates. They all gave me their personal information and asked me to please share that with anyone if they would like, if you could meet with any of them. Mr. Fabiano?
I think it's February sixth, not February fifth.
You're right.
So if anyone would like any of the candidates' information...
That is correct.
The sixth, right? If anyone would like any of the candidates' phone number, email address, please let me know. Do we have any public comment this evening? Ms. Ryan?
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, forty-nine Waldemar Ave. A good segue with regard to the school committee vacancy. I've had the sincere pleasure of speaking a couple of times now with Suzanne Swope. I've got a little bit of notes here because I just came from work, so I apologize if I'm looking at them. First, she's a Winthrop resident, she is a mother and a grandmother. I know at least one of her grandchildren attends, I believe, the fourth. I'm not sure the other grandchild that she's mentioned. Her resume is spectacular. You know, she has, and she just, I'll mention this as well, if anyone, you know, watching this or wants to see it, I'm happy to forward it. I have her permission to forward her resume. Her resume is from being a teacher inside the classroom to a researcher. She has dealt with budgets, she's dealt with administration, she has dealt with staff. Her breadth of knowledge is truly incredible, and it certainly has been focused in the early childhood area and in special needs. I've spoken with her about various things, from whether some people perceive her to be sure or not I do, that we have a bit of a revenue issue in our town with regard to funding our schools. She believes that that is an issue as well. She is really eager to get involved, to look at new ideas, to help out on, you know, how we can really just even get more money into our school budget. I had a great conversation with her about, you know, what her thoughts are in helping out, you know, the principals and helping out in transition. As a parent of three children, one of the biggest transition years is when a child goes from the Gorman Fort Banks to the Cummings. It is a very big transition year, just socially what's demanded of the children, academically what's demanded of the children. And she actually said she'd had a couple of conversations with different people about that and had mentioned that as well. So she's eager to, you know, help out on that and get involved. But again, just from her background in education, you know, as a researcher inside the classroom, it's truly second to none. I just would, you know, hope that the committee really looks at her credentials. I've seen her at school committee meetings too, so she's already getting involved in being present, and she truly has one agenda, and that is what's the best for all of our students. And she knows too that students too are different learners. You know, she is a grandmother, and she just says how much she's enjoyed teaching her grandchildren differently than she taught her children. So she knows kids learn differently now. She's interested in that. She understands, you know, ESL students, the issues, if you will, or the, what can come into like, you know, schooling children with different language backgrounds, different socioeconomic backgrounds, different learning levels. She truly is just a superb, superb woman, so I would just hope that, again, just for one reason, based on her credentials, her agenda, and her just wanting to do what's best for our students, I truly feel that Suzanne really deserves a lot of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Any further public comment? All right, moving on to public relations, Mr. Matucci?
All set, thank you.
Mr. Fabiano?
I'd just like to reach out to anybody, any of the parents and students in special education. We do the Special Olympics on Sunday and Monday from ten to eleven-thirty. Reach out to myself or Winok, and we'd love to have you down there, and any of the other students would like to come down and help, high school students, we'd love to have you.
Parent? I'd just once again like to congratulate Devin Pulsiver for scoring a thousand points and his teammates for that accomplishment, and wish them best of luck the rest of the season.
I had the opportunity to attend the Screen Angels filming this week, which was very interesting. For any of you who have not seen it, I highly recommend it. I think they're going to be trying to have another one. It was about tech in our tweens and teens and what's happening. And one of the most, one of the very interesting parts of it was the debate in classroom and how much tech should be allowed and can be allowed, and it's, there's definitely no clear answers, and it's something that I think that we all want to be aware of, not only in our own homes, but what's happening in our schools and the capabilities. And then I'll just reiterate that we've got dinner theater this week. I went last year, it's a lot of fun, so if you have a chance to get up to Prince this week, it's definitely worth the stop because they're very talented and they do a great job with it.
I attended the concert last week, the music concert, and thanks to the staff here at the school, we were able to have it on the stage, even though we had a little water, you know, water situation before. And for the first time in twenty years, we heard the first Winthrop High School band play, and it was really cool. And of course, the other kids in the middle school did an awesome job as well. It was a great event. Keep up the good work, the music program.
I would like to make a motion that we enter executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, ought to conduct collective bargaining sessions of contract negotiation with non-personnel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will be a roll call? Oh, Ms. Haynes, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Fabiano?
Yep.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Kathleen Capuccio?
Yes. The ayes have it.